This is not about going after sort of the little guy for a few dollars here and there, but rather for looking at larger and more established businesses and just making sure that everybody is paying their fair share.
I fully share the controller's efforts to create new opportunities for inter-agency cooperation, as we have done since I was sworn in a little over eight months ago. And we will move expeditiously to implement those changes that will benefit the public.
Officials say they would have a better idea of who's paying or not paying taxes, as well as improved record-keeping practices. In downtown LA, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now, the LA City Fire Department introduces its latest batch of academy graduates. As Gilreys reports, they aim to fill a staffing shortage that so far has been covered by voluntary overtime.
They've finally made it to graduation day after 20 exhausting weeks of academy training.
Be proud of your accomplishment. You are among the most elite class of first responders.
On this day, the LA City Fire Department graduates 43 men and women. And it comes at an opportune time, as the department braces for a number of retirements within its ranks, firefighters who need to be replaced. LA City Fire Chief Ralph Tarazas says around 150 firefighters are expected to retire over the next year. Adding to this expected deficit, a current shortage of around 300 firefighters following years of hiring freezes. This has crews scrambling to fill job shifts.
Our people are working a lot. We're asking them to work two extra shifts per month to make up for the vacancies. Prior to the class that graduated last year, we hadn't hired in five years. So five years of people retiring adds up.
Blame the recession for most of the hiring freeze, also a delay in hirings last year, after city leaders determined the selection process was unfair and lacked diversity. Hirings resumed only after a lottery system was enacted to help ensure fairness. The chief calls it "a work in progress."
A system to ensure that we get diversity of the city. This class and prior classes have approximately 50% of minority candidates. But we're going to have an active recruitment effort next year that's going to increase those numbers.
Meantime, these current graduates include two women, the first female grad since Mayor Garcetti took office.
I'm particularly proud. While it's not a sea of change yet, it is also a harbinger of what is to come. It's been such a privilege to be able to work with the mayor and my colleagues to ensure that we can hire firefighters once again.
As the department focuses on reducing response times during one of the worst fire conditions in California history, following four-plus years of drought. In San Pedro, Gilreys for LA This Week.
Academy training is grueling, fire officials say. About 20% of recruits don't make it to graduation. Well, we tend to think books, not hammer and nails, when we think of the LA Unified School District, but hammer and nails it is, as the district helps launch a mixed-use project that will bring much-needed housing to Hollywood. Anna Marcos has more.
The LA Unified School District is going from educator to home builder, as it teams up with Abode Communities, a group that builds affordable housing. Selma Community Housing near Hollywood's Selma Elementary will bring 66 affordable units online using school district land. It was born from a school employee's idea.
How about if we take one of our parking lots and we just park underneath a building and we let someone else come in and build something that we can do some low-income housing for us?
School district employees living on working wages will get priority with these units, but they will also house other working families in Hollywood earning below median income.
The project also includes 117 parking spaces for school workers.
This department has been really great in facilitating the district's goal of utilizing surplus land to build affordable housing for the community in general.
Mayor Eric Garcetti has long supported affordable housing in a city where close to half the working residents struggle to pay their rent.
We have to look at those pockets of poverty and suffering and say something has to be done. We have the biggest gap between wages and rents in the country, in LA County here.
We think of the families who are here at Selma. We think of the families who will be moving in here just under a year from now. And we still have a lot of hope.
Let's get this thing finished and let's get the families in here. Thank you.
And with that and the signing of a plaque, the home-building has begun. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The district is also involved with Abode Communities on similar housing projects in Glassell Park. Well, ever wonder what Los Angeles was like in the earlier days? Well, thanks to a local exhibit, objects are helping tell the story of this historic city. Rasha Goel has more.
We have a payment voucher to the Zanero. The Zanero was the man who oversaw the water system. And the Zanero was probably the most powerful man in the city, akin to the mayor.
This original payment voucher gives a rare glimpse into LA's vibrant past. It's one of many artifacts that helped bring to life the unique stories of Los Angeles through the History Keepers exhibit recently held at Pico House in downtown Los Angeles. It showcased various materials and objects to help understand the city's history.
Los Angeles is super diverse and multifaceted, and one story does not tell all.
The exhibit was a collaboration between the California Historical Society and LA as a Subject, a historical collection of unique LA-based pieces that date from the late 1800s to 2014.
It's a collage of the history of Los Angeles, pasted onto a pinball machine, and that's been a big attraction. There is a smoker that was used in the fields of the orange groves in southern California in Los Angeles.
And in fact, this brick piece was found in Chinatown as builders were putting up a new building in 2014.
That was the brick water pipe that was used to bring water into the city. But I knew that if we don't get it, we'll lose an opportunity to acquire it. We'll kick ourselves, I would kick myself the rest of my life if I didn't do it.
LA as Subject members, which includes over 260 institutions, individuals, museums, libraries, and archives contributed the items. Exhibit items with stories that would never be forgotten. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
History Keepers was held in the month of August in the city's first grand hotel, the 1869 historic Pico House. While LA Mayor Eric Garcetti gets on board a plan to eradicate all traffic fatalities over the next decade, the city attorney targets a rise in identity theft cases, and pedestrians will soon have more street-crossing options at a busy intersection. All these stories in City Beat. Sitting at a desk in the middle of a Boyle Heights street, Mayor Eric Garcetti signed an executive directive aimed at cutting traffic fatalities in the city to zero by 2025. The directive calls for reaching the goal dubbed Vision Zero by creating safer streets, enforcing traffic laws, and conducting more public education. The action sets up a committee consisting of mayoral, police, fire, public works, and county public health staff that will target areas most in need of safety upgrades. City officials say more than 200 people a year die in traffic collisions, with about 44% of all deaths and severe injuries involve pedestrians and bicyclists. Each year, there are about 30,000 collisions in Los Angeles.
If we can achieve the vision of Vision Zero, children will be safer walking to school, families will be safer going to the park, commuters will be safer going to work.
The heavily-traveled intersection of Hollywood and Highland will soon be getting a makeover to improve safety for the thousands of pedestrians who cross there each day. The effort, spearheaded by City Councilman Mitchell Farrell, will see the intersection be redesigned to give it a scramble crosswalk, which will allow pedestrians to cross from all corners in every direction, including diagonally and simultaneously. Pedestrians at the intersection currently cross in a traditional fashion, waiting for a green light and walk signal in each direction, with no diagonal crossing. The $50,000 project is expected to be completed by the end of the year. City Attorney Mike Fuhr is stepping up efforts to tackle the growing problem of identity theft. Fuhr said he is assigning two full-time attorneys and adding other resources to deal with identity theft cases. The city attorney's office so far this year has filed 375 identity theft cases. Last year, the office filed a total of 254 cases.
They're going through your trash, which identity thieves do, whether they're going through your mailbox, or whether they're trying to find other means of getting your background. They're trying to build a profile of who you are. And in the course of building that profile, they want to take advantage of key bits of information that they're getting. Don't give it to them.
The public can avoid becoming the victims of identity theft by shredding personal and financial documents, not giving out sensitive information, not using debit cards, locking mailboxes, and not storing driver's licenses or registrations inside their car. An installation of a new control system is helping pave the way for a brighter future at LA sanitation. Rasha Goel has more.
This control room is the latest technological advancement at the LA Sanitation's Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant, one that is being commended for its efficiency.
From this very room behind me, we will monitor water in our system, in all of our water reclamation plants, as far away as Van Nuys in the San Fernando Valley.
This innovative project, as Commissioner Repening mentioned, brings over $100 million of just efficiencies to the city of Los Angeles.
The 15-year project will ultimately monitor and control thousands of assets at LA sanitation facilities citywide, all at one location.
We have 6,700 miles of pipes. We have 67 pumping stations. We have four water reclamation plants. We serve 4 million people in the city of LA, and all of that is going to be controlled from right here.
The new control room centralizes system monitoring, which increases reliability, safety, efficiency, and sustainability of all water reclamation operations. Varuj Apkian, who has been key in implementing the system, says this is going to help in resolving some of the past issues, including managing contracts, vendors, and...
We had issues on managing various contracts for various vendors, various systems, with a beginning and a different ends. We had issues with training all of our operation, maintenance, engineering staff on various systems to maintain them as well as operate them. As people moved from location to location, we had to retrain them.
Officials say the new system will also help in handling emergency response. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now, this new system will position Los Angeles sanitation as a leader in the field of wastewater treatment and water reclamation. Well, one way to beat the heat is to take a dip in Hollywood's newly renovated public pool. As Gilreys reports, one councilman made a big splash at the pool's reopening.
Wearing a dress shirt, slacks, and shoes, Hollywood-area Councilman Mitchell Farrell gets ready to take the plunge.
This is a beloved pool in a beloved park that's going to see lots of use. So it's a very exciting day here in Hollywood, in the 13th district.
The Hollywood Pool reopened this summer after a $7 million renovation. Improvements include shaded bleachers, a new lifeguard station. There's also what seems to be everyone's favorite...
The slide!
The water slide!
The slide!
The slide!
It has to be the slide!
Yes, a big, swirly, water-gushing, aqua-blue slide, the main attraction at this pool, which originally opened in the 1950s.
It's also more sustainable. It has water conservation built into the design. It's also more efficient with the way it dispenses chemicals. It can be done remote from a smartphone.
Better jump in before the pool closes for the fall season. At the Hollywood Recreation Center, Gilreys for LA This Week.
The Hollywood Pool will be open every day until September 7. Well, it's a yearly tradition in South LA as folks from the community gather to enjoy some smooth jazz up close. The soulful sounds of the upright bass entertains the crowd, along with other musical instruments, as jazz musicians take to the stage in South LA during the 20th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival. One jazz lover has been attending the event for 15 years and says that even though many of his favorite jazz artists are now gone, the new ones are just as talented.
There's still good jazz artists around and young jazz artists around to still keep the event vibrant and, you know, very enjoyable.
For more than two decades, the Central Avenue Jazz Festival has helped celebrate the musical history and culture of South Los Angeles, the West Coast birthplace of jazz music.
This is an exciting time of year, which brings family, friends together to share in the wonderful experience of jazz, the music that really defined this part of Central Avenue for so many years.
This free, family-friendly event along the historical Central Avenue between King Boulevard and Vernon Avenue included three stages of live musical performances, art and business development, and employment resources, health, wellness, youth pavilions, and of course, plenty of barbecue. Price says the festival highlights all the changes taking place in the neighborhood, such as facade work and mural restorations on buildings and other street improvements. The LADWP is also planning to move some of the utility lines underground, creating a more visually appealing street. Not only appealing to the eyes, but the ears as well. Our Los Angeles Dodgers opened their first Children's Dream Field for kids with disabilities. Gilreys shows us the specially-designed stadium in Baldwin Hills.
Children with special needs finally getting their chance at bat.
So that's really special, because it'll give every kid an opportunity to know what it's like to be on that ball, Diamond, to maybe catch a ball or run around the bases.
City Council President Herb Wesson, local kids and the Dodgers, here in Baldwin Hills for the opening of the team's 38th Children's Dream Field. These mini stadiums are oftentimes built for kids in underserved LA neighborhoods, but this is the first specifically designed for kids with disabilities. Its synthetic turf allows easy access for wheelchairs and walkers. The city, the LA 84 Foundation, and the Dodgers, they all teamed up to build the $650,000 stadium. National League MVP and Cy Young winner Clayton Kershaw and his wife Ellen also donated to the cause.
The Dodgers, they're not just a first-place team. They're also made up of great individuals, great human beings who care about their community.
The cause hits home for Dodgers outfielder Jock Peterson. Peterson's brother Champ, seated next to him, has Down's Syndrome. First baseman Adrian Gonzalez and his family also here on opening day to lend support.
So I'm proud to be here with them, and we got them these brand-new solar lights. Compliments to the city of LA.
There's also a Dodgers scoreboard featuring faces of the special athletes who will use the park, all-stars in their own right. In Baldwin Hills, Gilreys for LA This Week.
Though it's the first Dodgers Dream Field for kids with special needs, the city has another universally accessible ballpark in the community of Lake Balboa. Well, Mayor Eric Garcetti's goal of cutting traffic fatalities to zero by 2025 received plenty of praise on social media. That's the focus of this week in tweets. Vision Zero Network tweeted, "Way to go at Vision Zero LA. You are leading the way, not only in your city, but across the nation." Tim Papendro posted a pic of the mayor alongside councilmembers Mike Bonin and Mitchell Englander, posting, "Well done, LA, 11th city to join the movement to end traffic fatalities." Jeanette Sade Khan retweeted the mayor's post, writing, "Hashtag #VisionZeroTakesFlight in the City of Angels, as Eric Garcetti vows to nix traffic deaths. Bravo." And Wolfpack Hustle posted, "Thank you, Bonin, Englander, and Hweezar, for leading our city council towards safe streets for all." Bridget Smith wrote, "Handle, Eric Garcetti says LA is no longer the world's car capital, now the capital of transportation renaissance. #VisionZero." And that's a look at this week in tweets. Well, a local festival celebrates cultural diversity with the help of Council Districts 1, 14, and the Department of Cultural Affairs. Rasha Goel has more.
This is the 10th anniversary of Lummis Day. Lummis Day is a celebration of our city's diversity, our cultural diversity, and just all the ethnicities that come together.
This year, for the first time, the event was held for three days at five locations. This particular one in Boyle Heights, known as the Festival of Northeast Los Angeles, Lummis Day is a free event that has become a signature community arts and music event in the neighborhoods of northeast Los Angeles.
We have bands, we have vocalists, we have poets, and we have dancers.
Among the artists performing was Jessica Fichot, whose French, and Chinese, and American upbringing has influenced her music of fusing styles and languages.
Oh, I enjoy music, I enjoy dancing, and I enjoy seeing community events, and it's very fun.
And of course, there was a little taste of culture for attendees. Lummis Day may have been celebrated at five locations, but for this community, it's one big party. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Lummis Day is named in honor of Charles Lummis, who founded the city's first museum and whose name became known for promoting cultural diversity. Well, a dance group seeks to inspire young kids through hip-hop, discovering the heart of LA, and getting creative with recycling. All this and this week's Things to Do. Justice by uniting in Creative Energy, or JUICE, is a nonprofit weekly hip-hop arts program that seeks to develop youth leadership and technical skills, creative expression, and self-confidence through hip-hop, which includes breakdancing, urban art, DJing, and music recording. JUICE is a nonprofit hip-hop collective that teaches visual arts workshops, painting large-scale murals in the community, and recording and producing music. Free for all ages, JUICE encourages the creative expression and self-empowerment of at-risk youth through skill-building using the music, visual art, and dance of the hip-hop culture. By providing youth with high-quality equipment, artistic mentors, and a safe, accessible space to gather, JUICE participants are able to learn from each other and hone their artistic skills in an environment free from discrimination and violence. The jam sessions take place every Saturday at the MacArthur Park Recreation Center located at 2230 West Sixth Street. For more information, visit RampartJUICE.com. Now in its 35th year, the LA Conservancy's walking tour program can help you discover or rediscover the hidden gems and fascinating history in the heart of our city. Join in and explore the history and architecture of downtown LA. Since 1980, the Los Angeles Conservancy has introduced countless Angelenos to the rich history and culture that downtown's architecture has to offer. Discover the heart of this great city as skilled volunteer docents talk about fascinating stories of downtown's transformation. Visit public plazas hidden in plain sight and see how the old and the new blend into a unique urban landscape. The tour takes place on Saturday, September 5 at 2:00 p.m. Meeting location is at Pershing Square. For more information, visit laconservancy.org. Kids get a chance to creatively reuse a collection of recycled materials to make fantastic art projects to take home. Rediscover Center is an arts and environmental nonprofit organization. It's a creative center which promotes resource conservation, creativity, and community engagement through material reuse. Open studio is open every Saturday and Sunday. The last project starts at 4:00 p.m. to allow enough time for completion. With membership, receive two children-free once per month. Rediscover Center is located at 12958 West Washington Boulevard. For more, visit rediscovercenter.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Sergeants, please call the members at the meeting. Good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 1st. I believe we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonne, Buscaino, Sadio, Ingrid, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Corcoran, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Weston, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Rue moves. Corret seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now by the time for the flag salute.
Will be led today by Mr. Gilbert Sadio in our flag salute. Mr. Sadio.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request to continue Item 1F to September 16th and Item 6 to September 22nd.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order.
Item 1 is an item known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1A, E, B, and M may be received and filed inasmuch as they have been paid in full, partially rescinded and paid, and is owner-occupied dwelling respectively.
So without objection, that'd be the order. We're where now?
And there are cards on that item.
Okay, next.
Items 2 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so, Members 2 through 17, any specials? I don't see any, so on these items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 18 and 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objections, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, cards on both items.
That brings us where?
On the continuation agenda, Item 20 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, let's hold that item. Continue.
Item 21 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this. Mr. Weezer.
Yes, can I call 21 special, please?
Okay, 21 special for Mr. Weezer. That brings us where? Mr. Rue?
President, I apologize. 1H, can I continue for two weeks?
Okay, Item 1H.
And that's until September 16th.
Okay, without objection, Mr. Rue, that's the order. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special.
Okay, we're going to move now to Item 19, called special for a card. Mr. Walsh, Item 19.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or @JWalshConfidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is the final map. This is the final map, number 19, for North Owensmouth. And what we have here are the maps are set in place, the ability of zoning to build high-rises. They change your map when you're not looking, and then suddenly you find a high-rise being built right next to your home, which of course lowers the value of your home, and then the jackals come in and buy your house, and then expand the project. That's what's happening here. HollywoodHighlands.org for all the information.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, before we move forward, I'd like to request that our CAO, CLA, and the representative from the City Attorney's Office, dealing with the Olympics report to the council chambers. Item 18, Brian Barajas and Mr. Walsh, come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or @JWalshConfidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. This concerns the holding of the Congress of Neighborhoods on September 11th and 26th here at City Hall and Neighborhood Empowerment. In fact, if these Congress of Neighborhoods was in any way a threat to the people who run this city, even microscopic threat, what would happen here is that they wouldn't be allowed within 20 miles of City Hall. This is an organization, you know, it's like people for, it's like Jews for Hitler. It's a very small, it was a very small, small group in Germany, but it was treated very well by the Nazis. Neighborhood empowerment is an oxymoron. They don't want you to pay any attention to what I say. They want to prevent, they don't want you to even see my Jew face. Remember, they're treating, you can't see my Jew face.
Stay on the subject.
The subject is neighborhoods and why this neighborhood congress is a farce. It's a joke. They'll come here and they'll, from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, they're going to be here for 11 hours of getting on their knees, wearing the kneepads, and doing to the mayor what Glenn Day does to the mayor every day.
Thank you.
Reset.
All right, thanks. Well, I have a, I think that my concern would be, any of these meetings that you hold together, one of the things that always lacks is vision. And I think the premise here would be, if I do attend, I want to see how many people are willing to face, you know, the future of civilization. I know that people, or particularly in this session, people love to deal with local issues, but apparently that short vision is the problem. And I think that if anybody wants to, you know, produce a future, the premise of this place to be used, anything other than promoting a future, is a farce, as John Walsh said in his own way. And I do believe also that any lack of vision embraced by any society actually embraces Nazism, or at least fascism, or leading into a tyranny because of that lack of vision. And this includes the citizens who partake in this event, the representation that are in this event. And so my mission again is to see how many people want to deal with the real future. We have a lot of problems, sure, but how do we deal with not just local issues, but how do we deal a general issue which actually is the cause of your local issues, whether it be poverty or anything like that? So the real ideas will empower the way you manage not just yourselves, not just local, not just state, but the world issue.
Mr. Herman.
Morning. Yeah, I must agree with both speakers. Both speakers are right on target, that we've created a situation where white lives don't matter no more because of the racism of...
No, you've got to stay on the subject.
We're on 19, right?
18.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. My mistake. Hang on. Okay, so we're on 18 here, 18, 18. Is that a 1 and an 8? 18? Woo! And Mr. [laughing].
You're not on the subject, Mr. Herman.
...to holding the Congress Neighborhood Councils. Tell them, Mr. B., September 11th and 20, September 26th, 2015, and there was no, no impact statement. See, John Walsh is right. I'm going to hold my time to one minute.
Okay, let's move to Mr. Fuentes.
I'm off of this one. Pass.
Okay. Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, in the operative language in the motion, there was a September 20th date indicated. The agenda is actually correct. The dates are September 11th and September 26th. So I just want to make that clarification and ask for your eye vote.
Okay. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Move to Item 21. Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman, Sean Murphy, followed by Mr. Herman. No, no, you're disrupting. Just wait till you get to the podium here. Yes, Ms. Peirman?
Oh, here, it seems like we're now doing renovation of Pershing Square. Seems to me we don't need any renovation of Pershing Square. That looks perfectly fine over here. We just maybe, unless you just got one or two more places down there across the street, I don't really see that we need anything done in Pershing Square. We need to try to figure out a way to bring down the prices so people can afford to buy anything over in this area, because you don't even have anything for a dollar item over here in City Hall, and it's pretty expensive across the street, too. So, you're not going to, people are, you can renovate it all you want, but as long as you have the prices too high for anybody to buy anything across the street, people are not going to buy. So, that's all I can say about that. And bring back video conferencing. This is silly.
You're off the subject. Okay, next speaker, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, Sean Murphy. This item is a good item. Long as it doesn't cost the city too money, and for God's sakes, we don't need another high-rise.
Mr. Herman.
Well, Mr. B., it's very obvious that Pershing Square is going to get renovated, but incidentally, you know, it's not for the purpose of this establishment to waste the taxpayers' money on recreational parks at this moment when we're in a crisis, a deficit, because they have a large water theme there in Pershing Square. I think you should create a desert landscape as opposed to water landscape. And then in addition to that, you know, don't you think we need to have like desert plants, plants native to America? Not the way the Nazis poured all this cement into our wars, but that's another subject. So the responsibilities and relationships between the Department of Recs and Parks, I find this motion unacceptable. We're in a drought. We're in a drought. So you can't put more concrete in a concrete city downtown in Pershing Square. You cannot renovate Pershing Square because you already put millions of dollars into the lawn system there and all the trees that you... put millions of dollars into the lawn system there and all the trees that you, that you already made somewhat look good. Mr. B, explain it to them. Well, you see, yesterday when I was walking to Pershing Park, they were putting new plants in by the one gallon, and it takes a very long time for all these plants to grow. So it means the homeless people will sleep on them and step on them accidentally because you don't provide homeless people with homes. Okay, he's right. So rather than spending money in Pershing Square, why don't you take the money and do something more creative, not like Jose Weezer, and put homeless people out of Pershing Square?
No, you've got to stay on the subject.
You're putting people out of Pershing Square. That's the whole problem here. Create a park that has restrooms for the disabled, the elderly, and the homeless, and all our veterans who need a place to bathe. God damn, what is America coming to, this Nazism by you heard, Wesson? You white Polish hot dog.
Okay, you're not, you're off the subject. Your time's gone. No, your time is gone. Sargent, Sargent, he is continual, continuing to disrupt this meeting. Mr. Herman, if you do that again, I will have you removed. This is your last warning. Okay, now it's my understanding that before I call on you, Mr. Weezer, well, anyway, I'll go to you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something I'm really excited about. Two years ago, my office put together a task force to look at Pershing Square and to examine whether we could better utilize this park. It is in the heart of downtown Los Angeles. Some were concerned that this park did not really invite people in. It had the design of what was in the 1970s and 80s, a fortress-type mentality as we built our structures in downtown to keep people out rather than invite them in. But a public park should be open and transparent and inviting to people. Has a lot of concrete, and some people thought that all the concrete didn't really exhibit the type of parks we would like to have here in the city of Los Angeles. So through that, we started the Pershing Square Renew. It is a public-private partnership that will help re-envision Pershing Square. We will launch an international design competition tomorrow that would give us new ideas on how we could renovate this beautiful park in the heart of downtown LA. This is costing the city nothing. It is being managed by us fundraising for this public-private partnership. We have a number of Tefar dollars that are going in, and there's a neighboring developer that contributed a million dollars to this public-private partnership. It's exciting news because as downtown LA continues to renovate itself and re-envision itself, all our public spaces should have that same type of new urbanism that we are now planning for downtown LA. So what we have before us today is simply an agreement between the city, Wreckin' Parks, and Pershing Square Renew, the nonprofit that was created, to move forward on this re-envisioning process. Invite you all to keep monitoring this. It's pretty exciting to see what we can do in our public spaces. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, is Mr. Walsh still here? Did you want to speak on this item? I did not see it, but they told me that you said you had. So please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Okay, I've been through two total renovations since 1980 of Pershing Square. There's not much you can do with it. It's fine the way it is, but you want to give out contracts to your friends. And I had never seen this before. It concerns the Arts, Parks, and River Committee, which waives consideration of the above matter. Well, if they're not involved in arts and parks, why do they exist? What this means is they don't want, the mayor and Glenn Day do not want the Parks Commission, the Parks Committee, getting involved in this. They want to deal with handing out the contracts to their own friends, the Garcetti-Dake.
Stay on the subject.
And so what we're having here is a Pershing Square review. If you go down there, there is absolutely no reason to in any way create a plan for a new park. It's, when you hold your rock concerts there, there are no problems. Everything goes smoothly. You just want to create new work for your contractors. But if you really want to put in a new Pershing Square, just make it part of your phony Olympic multi-billion dollar plan.
You're not on the subject.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just for the record, item 21A has been circulated. Motion 21A.
So let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Go to item one. Donna Peirman, Ajay Jung. And Ruhi Weegran. Identify yourself, sir, and go ahead. Yes, sir. Sir, yes.
Speak now?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Please.
I have a fine, excuse my English first. I will try my best. For city violations, I'm fined for $4,112. But first violation, I closed my store and there are construction material to build a retaining wall, but HPOG, which my property belongs, objected to my plan to build a retaining wall. So there are some materials on my yard. And at the time, when I was told to remove materials within a month, I was trying hard, but then I called the inspector and asked for a two-week extension, and I was granted. However, the inspector came out as it was originally informed me and that I didn't complete the work.
Let me stop you, Mr. Jung. Now, I could be wrong, but Charles, didn't we already deal with this? We receive and file this?
Yeah, exactly. It was received and filed, so he doesn't have a case, so it was closed out.
Okay, so why don't we explain that? So he's got the outcome he was looking for?
Yeah, we'll try to explain it to him further.
Okay, why don't you get Mr. Jung to the side and explain to him what has occurred where it relates to his, okay? And if I could get, so if you and Mr. Jung speak to the gentleman in the red, and he will explain to you what has happened with your situation. And if I could have Donna Peirman, so Charles, would you get him on the side?
He has explained enough. However, there are things that are not resolved for me.
Well, I think that based on the action we took today, that it has been. But I'll send somebody to come talk to the two of you.
I had a hearing with the city attorney, and the city attorney at the time told me to go because I've done anything wrong. However, I still find.
So if you could go over on the side, we'll have Charles and I'll send someone else to talk to you, because that's not my understanding of what is happening here. I was under the impression that you were okay on this now. Ms. Peirman.
Well, if he owes anything, I hope you make, he can make a payment plan with him. But on the non-serious side, we need the revenue to spend lots of money on items already held, all that. Anyway, I see all the nice, nice, hugely expensive so-called affordable housing and multifamily units. Then that's why we have to have the liens, and so City Council has money for the pet projects. It can't be do that if we forgive it. So, so the places can have great big, huge lawns, and we can bring in all these projects that have, you know, like businesses that have anything, doesn't really have anything like real estate that has nothing to do with helping out the people. So this, you know, these liens are really just getting to, nobody tells me exactly how these liens are supposed to help anybody out, the city out, except it seems to me that City Council spends way too much money on frivolous projects, and that's why I can go on this, because, because apparently everything has already been held, and therefore I can't speak about the CRA project with the affordable housing, and I can't speak about $950,000.
Get back on the subject.
So the bad project is the liens. So says Wayne Spindler, let's say, yeah, just spend it, let's get more revenue, let's get more revenue, let's get more revenue. Okay, thank you.
Donna, Ms. Peirman, what is on your head?
It looks like Lawrence of Arabia.
It's your what?
Herman's idea to make me look like Lawrence of Arabia.
Oh, okay. All right, then. I had to ask, huh? Okay. Do we have a Roxanna from Mission Hills? Please come forward. Good morning.
So I just, I have some fines I got to pay for my property, and I just wanted to see if there's a payment plan I can work out with the city.
And what's the address again?
15039 Lassen Street, Mission Hills, 91345.
Why don't, why don't I ask you to come to the side, have a conversation, follow the sergeant. Ruhi Weegran, Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh. Oh, Mr. Walsh is out of time? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I was given a citation for a property where the backyard fence was bent, and I was told to pay $356.16 on, on September 25th, 2012. And I made a payment on October 15th, 2012. And now I'm getting a lien for $1,200, something near $1,200. And I'm disabled, and my husband is not working. We're on a fixed income, and we cannot afford this. And I believe there's, there was an error on this matter.
Charles, just stay there. Could you shed some light on this?
Yeah. Morning, council. My name is Charles Caliballa. I'm here to represent the Department of Building and Safety. On this property, 13840 West Bessemer Street, it's owned by the lady Ruth Wagon. We continue this case a couple of weeks. We tried to talk to the property owner and also talk to the inspector. The inspector has insisted that this lien was processed correctly. I've talked to all of them, and so the department recommends that this lien be confirmed for $1,135.64. It consists of a CVIF fee of $356, a surcharge of $50.40, late charge of $483. The amount that the property owner paid was applied to the late fee, so the balance is accurate, and she owes that, and we recommend that the lien be confirmed for that amount.
Okay. Mr. Kokorian, did you have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. President. Can I ask that this matter be continued, please, for 30 days so that we can try to investigate and get to the bottom of what the potential mistake was, if there was one? And ma'am, if you can come over here, my staff will, will talk to you about it.
So without objection, we will continue that item for 30 days, which should bring us to October 2nd?
October 6th because of the council recess.
Okay.
And for the record, that's item 1K.
All right. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman passes.
On item 1G, Mr. President, if we can continue item 1G for two weeks.
When you're disrupting, I'll get to you. Just stay there. Mr.
1G, if we can, 1G for two weeks.
Did you hear that, Madam Clerk, which had put us at September 8th?
September 16th.
September 16th?
Great, thank you.
And I'm informed that 1M for two weeks. That would bring us where?
September 16th.
Okay. Now, it's my understanding that Mr. Walsh is out of time. Is that, is, is that true or not?
No.
No, wait, Mr. Walsh, you're disrupting the meeting. So is that true? The clerk says that you, that you, your time is over. So thank you, Mr. Walsh. You can go take a seat. Mr. [inaudible]. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could request that we reconsider item number six. We had asked to continue it. However, I've been informed that there's a time limit to that. So instead of continuing it for three weeks, I would ask that we continue it till this Friday. So I suppose we would need to reconsider and continue it to this Friday.
Item six. So let's vote. In fact, can we just do that verbally? Okay, so this vote to reconsider. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, and now we will continue this to when?
Till September 4th.
Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'll ask if we can reconsider item seven.
Item seven, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
We can go ahead and take up that item now as well.
Okay, now we will vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And if I could ask that that item be forthwith?
Without objection, that is forthwith.
All right, now we're going to go ahead and go with item 20. First, we're going to go ahead and take cards on item 20, John Walsh. You're out of, actually out of time, I'm sorry. So we'll go ahead and note and file your card. So we'll go ahead and note and file your card. That's the same agenda, thank you. No, I'm sorry, John. You're disrupting the meeting. Was it, John? I'm sorry, you're disrupting the meeting. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can you weigh in on this?
This is the same agenda.
Thank you. All right, same agenda. McAdams? Al McAdams? Not here?
Now, not that John Walsh is going crazy about his time, it's a matter of the Olympics. John Walsh, Hollywood Highland, has always said we're becoming a financial hardship with the International Olympic Committee involved with the risks. Those risks will jeopardize all of you, no matter, all of you, yeah, because we, the taxpayers, will pay for it all. The Olympics, useless. Even Mr. B is quiet because he understands the risk involved without a community impact. And how dare you sit there smiling, thinking that this will go well for the Summer Olympics in 2024, Mr. Englander? How dare you sit there and laugh at the community that you will resolve in taxation later on because we can't afford to budget the city? How dare you, Mr. Englander, sit there and ensure any one of us and any one of these council members, you, Mr. Corretts, you, Mr. Rue, who's done a great job with this? If it wasn't for Rue, where would we be? Nowhere. We would be like this. NWA, nothing whatever. So the whole point of the issue is, John Walsh was denied the time of 30 seconds to say-
He is not talking about this item.
The bid for the city 2424 Olympics is gonna jeopardize the city. It will jeopardize the city. And how dare you walk around here like it's no big joke, Mr. Englander?
Stay, stay on the subject.
It is. It's the Olympics and the United States Olympic Committee. And going back to what Mr. Corretts and Mr. Herwesson said about going to France. I wanna go to France. Take me to France.
You're not, you're not on the subject.
Take me to France. I wanna go to the Olympics in France. That's what he told you, Mr. Wayne Spindler, when you threatened him with Herwesson.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a seat.
Good morning. Thank you, council members, for your due diligence and making sure that the Olympics are gonna hopefully come back to the city of Los Angeles. I'm a sports agent, I represent Olympic athletes that train here in the city of Los Angeles, grew up here in the city of Los Angeles, and are a legacy of the LA 84 Games that have been able to take advantage of the LA 84 Foundation money that was the leftover that made it the most profitable and most successful Olympics in the last 35 years. I can tell you that these athletes were kids and the Olympic Games will inspire the next generation of Angelenos and members of the entire community of Southern California. So, look, we have many legacy facilities here, Mr. Corretts and UCLA, we have the subway now coming to that part of town. We will be able to move people around town. And I just wanna thank you guys very much. You guys have done this in a very short amount of time after extra, after what happened with Boston. But the foresight and the commitment from the city council, as well as working due diligence with the U.S. Olympic Committee, I know that you guys can get it right. And I wanna thank you very much. You will do this. If we don't make the Olympics and we don't get it, we're still gonna be able to inspire the next generation of youth in this city. They need to be active, they need to be going to parks, they need to be playing sports. All of this is great for the city of Los Angeles, Southern California, and our entire community. So I appreciate what you guys have done. Thank you very much.
Great, no, thank you very much. That concludes the speaker cards. I'd now like to ask our CAO and CLA and City Attorney to please, if they can come to the front desk, Sharon So, Miguel Santana, Jim Clark, or others, if you can please come to the center table. Thank you very much. And I'd like to go ahead and open it up first to Mr. Weston.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and, and members. I think that it's important today that we understand exactly what it is that is before this body. And so that's why I have asked the CLA, CAO, and the City Attorney's Office to come by to answer any questions that you might have. We have, there have been a couple of concerns that have been raised. I hope that we can put those concerns to bed where it relates to this action. One was that we rushed this. I would hope that once we finish our conversation with our administrators, they will be able to, to explain that this is not a rushed proposal, that in essence, we have bought the city time to properly negotiate. The other question is about a commitment from this council to take on cost overruns. The, the item that is before us today has absolutely nothing to do with that. I jokingly said yesterday that this is the engagement, not the wedding, and now we are in the prenup stages of putting together what the agreement is going to actually be. So with that said, I'd like to direct some questions to our distinguished group at the center table. Can you explain? See, how do I wanna go about this? Exactly what is before this body? And I'll start with you, Mr. Santana.
Good morning, Miguel Santana, CAO. What you have before you is a beginning of a process. And you've outlined what you would like that process to look like, who should be involved in that process, and ultimately what your expectation is of the outcome of that process. In the revised motion that's been submitted, you're directing the adoption and the authorization of the joint agreement that has, that has been amended, in which the City Attorney could walk you through to exactly what it means. And it also establishes, the revision has your body adopt the principles that were enumerated in our report. And explicitly in principle C, it states that any public funds committed will require the express authorization of the city council and the mayor, including but, but not limited to providing a financial guarantee to cover any Olympic-related costs. Which, what that means is that when the question of a guarantee surfaces, your body will be asked to vote on it specifically. This does not grant that guarantee.
Does this obligate us financially what to vote today?
It, no, it does not.
Okay, is this rushed? Or does this buy us time?
This, again, starts a process. Given the number of hearings that have now been had, the, the amendments on the resolution itself, and your motion, it establishes a process for the council to have additional input in the development and the negotiation of the critical documents, and also makes it clear that those critical documents must come before your council and ultimately approve one way or the other.
Okay, so now quickly to the City Attorney. Where it relates to the amendments, many of which were, the ad hoc committee came up with to make this a stronger document and, and to ensure that the council had a stronger role. Can you kinda quickly highlight what the council's role will actually be based on the amendments?
The council's role, Mr. Weston, will be what it should be in any event, and that is to basically decide if the city wants to go forward with the Olympics after, during this negotiation period, and also whether the city wants to make a financial commitment of any type, including any kind of guarantee. I think the initial agreement did not provide those guarantees. It was amended, and I think the amended agreement protects the city in that regard and gives the council the role it should have, which is basically is the governing body of Los Angeles.
So as our council, would you say that the agreement that is before this council today is much improved than the one that was initially agendized?
I would say it was critically improved, Mr. Weston. This one protects the city, the other one, in my view, do not.
I'd like to ask the CLA, Ms. Soto, weigh in on this and your thoughts about the protection of this council. I wanna make sure we are not agreeing to pay anything today. Basically, I think what we're telling the world, if we, if we vote for this, is that we are LA and we're here to compete. That's the way I read this. But I wanna hear your opinion.
That is correct, Mr. President. The item before you today is really, this amended joint agreement provides you with both the time to consider this and also the ability to make a decision on any financial commitment that could be coming forward later. In the original agreement, the language was not entirely clear, that it appeared that the council was making a commitment, whatever that financial commitment was, to cover any overruns. And so by adopting these revised recommendations, it allows you the time to make that decision. It gets you a place at the table to manage the costs because the only way that you can control the costs is if you are a participant in managing the costs. And so that is what this does.
And also, would this gives us the opportunity to go through and review the projected budget or budgets with a fine-tooth comb?
We expect that not only will the budget be reviewed, but also with regard to venue selection, the use of city facilities for any of those Olympic events. So we believe all of those will be on the table for us to consider as the city bid.
Yes, Mr.
Mr. Weston, I might note, I've been in constant contact with the lawyer for the bid committee up to 11 o'clock last night. We exchanged lists of things that would have to be covered by negotiations. And his first item was the financial commitment of any of the city. So he recognizes that by this action, this council is not committing the city financially at all.
Okay. And so basically, I hope that that has answered questions that members may have, but I also hope that that helps the public and helps the media understand exactly what is before the body today. So members, I would ask for an I-vote. I think this, again, like I said, this is the beginning, it is not the end. This is the engagement, it's not the wedding, and now it's time for us to work on the prenup. Mr. President, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. You may answer some, but we do have council members, Fuentes, Bloomingfield, Bonin, and O'Farrell currently on the board, so we'll open it up with questions or comments from Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilmember Weston, if this is the prenup, what we were being asked to consider before was a shotgun wedding, where we would have done the deal without having the opportunity of spoken to the I-dos, which I think is incredibly important. So I know, Jim, that in the last conversation that we had, you helped us understand what's in the revised jointer. What was not agreed to, to be in this jointer? By the, by the LA 24, whomever else parties? Or did we get everything that we asked for in this prenup?
A couple of things, Mr. Fuentes. LA 2024 is not a party to this agreement. This is an agreement between the United States Olympic Committee and the city of Los Angeles. So LA, but the lawyer for LA 2024 was very helpful in helping us negotiate this. Before, by taking initial vote on the jointer agreement, at least as I read it, and I think the chief legislative analyst and the CAO agree, we were committing ourselves, at least it seemed to us, to no further votes. So if a contract was presented to this council, it would have been almost a ministerial act. That's not true anymore.
And I think that's really important, that this jointer is revised. So I'm fairly supportive of it, given that I understand what opportunity the council has going forward to weigh in on the conversations, and like any good union, to carry the analogy on further, there needs to be negotiation. So can you help me understand how you synchronize what it is that the selection committee process looks like with the opportunities that the council will have to provide direction and limits to what is being negotiated? I imagine that's largely in the MOU, but if you had to just give us sort of a construct as to what you think that looks like, to me, that's very important. And I'll give you an example why I think that's important. It's been said and reported in the press that there is no way that the IOC will agree to the Olympics in Los Angeles unless the city of Los Angeles affirms its ability to backstop any fiscal issues. I reject that presumption, not because I don't believe the IOC, but, but I believe that the city of Los Angeles is uniquely positioned to be competitive and to offer increased negotiations to the end for us to have the best deal possible for the taxpayer. My assumption is that we will have the ability as a council to be able to give direction vis a vis a MOU on what it is that we would be willing to support. Previous councils have agreed up to about $250 million as a backstop. I'm not saying that's what we should agree to, but the ability for us to be able to intervene in the process and say, here is our bottom line? The jointer doesn't speak to that, and I understand why it doesn't. It's not, it's not intended to. But the MOU presumably would. How would that overlap with everything that is gonna be going forward?
I think, though, we're obviously early stages, and I have not had any contact with the International Olympic Committee. I don't think anybody in the city has. And we've had, the mayor's office has had contact with the United States Olympic Committee, but I think it's only the mayor's office that has. Having, with that preamble, the, the process will be this, the bid will be submitted on behalf of the LA 2024 Committee by September 15th. That will start, not terminate, the negotiations. The key agreement is the host city agreement. That's a tripartite agreement, that was in the city, LA 2024, and the U.S. Olympic Committee. At that, throughout that process, what the city agrees to do and what it doesn't agree to do will be up to the negotiators for the city. What the MOU is intended to do, although I think we're probably gonna use a slightly different form than an MOU, is to define as between the LA 2024 Committee and the city, who's responsible for what. For example, if there are cost overruns, is the bid committee, which will convert into an Olympic Games organizing committee, are they responsible for cost overruns? None of that's been decided yet, and the, this council will have an opportunity to influence and tell the negotiators for the city what to do, and then that agreement has to come back to the council for approval. And if you don't approve it, it's over.
And, and I understand that point. I'm just wondering how it is that we have the ability to influence the negotiations prior to a take it or leave it situation? I think that is the worst position for us to be in. I think what would be great, if we have our negotiators, the city's negotiators at the table, and I presume that was agreed to, then that gives us the ability to leverage our position for other things. Let me give you another example. The idea that an Olympic village has to be constructed, I think, is very, very exciting for the city of Los Angeles. And this is a hypothetical, it's not to say that I don't agree with it being placed where it's currently proposed to be, along the Los Angeles River, but I do think that there are some opportunities that could be had, notwithstanding the fact that we don't have a willing seller, that it's estimated to be $925 million, at least by the estimates given to us. The opportunities for Los Angeles is to identify parcels in the city of Los Angeles, whether it's the Sears Building, whether it's Montgomery Wards in Panama City, whether it's very blighted, very vacant, often neglected, but for these special sort of infusions of capital, opportunities for the city of Los Angeles. I think we deserve a robust conversation as a council, understanding that there'll be tension and a lot of fighting or the riverfront. But the opportunity that we have and the power as a city is our land use capability, and we have the ability to be efficient and get more for our dollar, presumably, other than just saying, here's where it's gonna be, take it or leave it. And for us, I think the opportunity is to be able to interject that thinking, those thoughts, that tension and creativity, prior to a negotiator saying to us, here's what IOC agreed to, take it or leave it. That, to me, is gonna be- That, to me, is going to be really critical. And again, understanding, Mr. President, that this is the prenuptial agreement, those recitals don't necessarily have to be in there today, but going forward, it's, I think, for me at least, to maintain my support and momentum, it's going to be very important for us to be able to intercede in the conversation and then affirm or deny based on our good work leading up to it, not take it or leave it, because no union works that way.
If I could add, as part of the amending motion submitted by the council president, it establishes our three offices to lead the negotiations on the council's behalf and on all documents, including the pertinent documents that establish the guarantee that you mentioned, as well as determining what the appropriate venues are, including the Olympic Village. And as leading those negotiations will be the principles that are outlined that you will also be being asked to adopt. So through that, you know, it is our intention to bring before you an honest and objective analysis of whatever risks you're being asked to consider within the appropriate context of the costs. And so we'll be working closely with the committee and with your council, providing new information as it becomes available, and then working with the mayor's office and the LA 24 on ensuring that those risks are mitigated.
Very good. Well, thank you for your efforts, because we've got a good jointure, and at this point, I can support it up until now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to start by thanking Council President Weston for taking this process and slowing it down a little bit, despite the fact that we were under tremendous pressure, and we are under tremendous pressure because of the dropout in Boston. I want to start by thanking him and all of you for embracing that idea, that we needed to make this more accountable. And I'm looking at these amendments. They're exactly the kinds of things I was asking about, and I'm pleased to see that they're in there to create more accountability, but most importantly, to give us that lead negotiating as we move forward. Because for me, this is not just about accountability, it's about leverage. If we, now that we're the lead negotiators and that we're putting that in there, we have the leverage to get a better deal, to use our land use capacity throughout this process and to not sign, you know, the prenup that basically precludes us from that possibility. The prenup, as the council president mentioned, is, you know, it's incredibly important because it's the old, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We're preventing ourselves from being in a position where we have no leverage and we have no ability to make these changes. So I'm excited about those changes. I'm pleased about that. And most of all, excited about the possibility of the Olympics. As council members, I think we need to, especially for this, we have to be both visionaries and fiduciaries. We have to have the vision to see the possibility of what this could be all about, how it could be transformative for so many young people and old people alike, just like the '84 Olympics were transformative for me in many regards. Many fond memories of the Olympics and a pride in the City of Los Angeles that I want the new generation of Angelinos to feel. My daughter will be the same age I was when I attended the Olympics if we get these Olympics in 2024, and I want her to have that sense of pride and ownership, pride in the city and inspiration for life that can come from these Olympics. So I wanted to thank the council president for slowing the process down, for adding these new accountability mechanisms in, but really also to say that I recognize this is the beginning of our hard work. We need to deal with the venues. We need to deal with all of the myriad of issues that are going to come before this council over this next year. We may think that we're starting this process, but really, we've basically engaged in a road that is going to take a lot of work, but I'm prepared to jump in as a member of this body and this Olympic Committee to make it happen. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, where's Mr. Weston? Thank you, Mr. Weston, wherever you are. Good night, Mrs. Calabash, wherever you are. I want to thank Mr. Weston for negotiating the additional amendments to this agreement. Before these were added, I don't think I could have been comfortable voting for this because of the risk that Mr. Clark outlined, but with these, I feel much more comfortable. I just had a couple of questions on what the timeline is now. We vote for the jointure agreement today. When do we anticipate the MOU, or whatever we're going to call it, gets executed? And what happens in 2017?
Well, as I understand it, the following will happen. The jointure agreement is a prerequisite to the bid of the city being submitted, which has to be done by September 15. It's done not everything you need, but it's the first thing you need. It's kind of like getting pre-qualified for a loan or something like that. Thereafter, we'll have a memorandum of understanding or probably agreement in different form between ourselves and LA 2024. LA 2024 is still in formation. The committee has not been filled out. It's not clear, at least to us, it may not be to the members of the committee exactly how it's going to function. But as I said, I've been already in contact, like daily, with the lawyer for LA 2024, and he sent me a list of issues last night. I sent him a list of issues, I thought, after meeting with the CLA and CAO yesterday. So it's going to move expeditiously, but they're getting a new general counsel at the LA 2024, who's somebody I happen to know quite well and I respect a lot. That's going to be very helpful. So it'll be negotiated, I hope, over the next six weeks, two months, something like that. But looking at the two lists we came up with, there's a lot of terms that we have to straighten out.
And I've been concerned about some of the financing elements of this. I think I spoke last week about my concern about the security costs, not having a written commitment that the federal government is going to pick those up, questions about whether or not the state is going to actually be giving any money. Can we require in the MOU of LA 24 that they seek and secure those commitments before we have to execute an agreement in 2017, if we have to?
I'm sure we can. The actual execution of the host city agreement, which the city's a party to, would be a commitment, would be late 2016, so we have ample time to do that. It's got to be submitted by the first part of 2017 to the International Olympic Committee.
And can we also, some of these events are going to be outside of the City of Los Angeles.
I think that's at least a tentative plan. I don't think that's been decided yet, but I think that's what the proposal includes.
Yeah. If that happens, can we seek through the MOU with LA 24 to try to get the other communities that have events to have some skin in the game?
It's interesting. One of the things that I was provided by the council for the LA 2024 Committee was an intergovernmental deal that the City of Chicago made with respect to the 2016 bid it made. It made a deal with other cities in Cook County, for example, as to who was liable for what. So I'm not sure 2024 would necessarily be the only party or even a party to that, but for example, we might have been agreement with the City of Long Beach, or the City of San Diego, or the City of San Francisco. That would be an intergovernmental agreement between those cities and us, but that's a definite possibility, but we don't know yet, for example, if some of the events would be held in Long Beach as opposed to, say, San Pedro, not to mention anything Mr. Puscano might be interested in.
Or Venice as opposed to Santa Monica.
That did occur to me too, Mr. Bonnet, but in any bit, that would be part of it if, in fact, other cities are going to be involved.
Final question. On the 20A, the amending motion, item 3C says, "Any public funds commitments will require the express authorization of the city council and mayor, including but not limited to providing a financial guarantee to cover any Olympics-related costs." That one is hugely important, I think. I'm so glad that's in there. A question on what that actually means. It says, "Including but not limited to providing a financial guarantee." So tell me if I'm correct. I'm reading that to mean that if we provide a financial guarantee, we still get a say in financial decisions and weigh in on city expenditures after that fact. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, to be explicit, it means that any commitments that are made, even if it means to waive fees of usage of city venues, if we're committing to waive the impact it has on our transportation system, our transportation staff, the use of city property for new venues like the Olympic Village, all of those things, what this principle determines is that they will be explicitly stated. You will know that you're making that commitment. You will have the context in which that commitment is being made, and you will vote on it separate and apart from anything else.
And they are written as commitments because there won't be any expenditures yet.
Even if those are questions that come up post-2017, as we get closer to the Games in 2020 or 2022, and there are financial decisions being made, this body still gets to weigh in.
That's correct.
Great. That's a phenomenal piece of legislative work, Mr. Weston. Thank you for getting that in here with these amendments. I'm very comfortable supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was less than a month ago that Boston basically withdrew their bid to be the host city for the United States, and since that time, I'll do some sort of Olympic metaphors here. Since that time, the mayor's office entered into a sprint. They then handed the torch off to the CLA, CAO, City Attorney's Office, and you're in the midst of a four-by-four relay, handing the torch to the city council, and we are entering into a marathon. And I think that with the revised jointure, it really puts us in a good place for the beginning of the marathon that will be this Olympic process for LA as a potential bidder for the '24 Olympics. At this point, we are a potential bidder. During this marathon, we will submit our bid. The USOC will decide if we should indeed be the choice for submittal for the '24 Games from the United States. In the mix, we know that there's already Paris considered a frontrunner, because 2024 will be the 100-year anniversary of the 1924 Olympics, which Paris hosted. But similarly to what Athens wanted in 1996, a lot of things went wrong with that bid when they were spoken of early on as the prohibitive favorite. They didn't get the Games. We also know that Hamburg is in the mix, as is Rome. So I like to think that we're in a marathon. Another metaphor is that we are the tortoise and perhaps the other cities are the hare, and that the method that we are engaging in will be very thorough, that we are really laying the stake down, that we are not going to allow Los Angeles taxpayers to be on the hook for cost overruns. And I think that this jointure, this revised jointure and this agreement that we're entering into to be considered for a host city really puts us in good shape with that. We're going to hear lots more details over the next several ad hoc committee meetings, and I look forward to hashing all of those out thoroughly, exhaustively, and we now have that wonderful opportunity to do just that. Like any body in negotiations for any sort of agreement, this council will and should be fully prepared to simply walk away if the terms are unfavorable to this council. And I think what I'm hearing around the horseshoe is that we're all generally in that place, and that's a really great place to be at this early stage of this marathon. So in order to complete this marathon successfully, we will have all of these terms answered to our satisfaction, and I am confident that we're about to endeavor to accomplish just that. And I think that will put us in pretty good shape for a potential bid for the '24 Olympics. And we, and I mentioned this last time, we need to look to LA 2025. I want to make sure that any Olympics that may happen in Los Angeles again benefit every corner of the City of Los Angeles. So we need to also kind of work toward the end and work our way back at the same time with what we want to see out of this, and I'm confident that this process that we're about to enter into will accomplish just that. So I want to thank everyone involved so far, because we're in a pretty good place entering into this marathon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Price, followed by Councilmember Ru, followed by Councilmember Cacorian, followed by Councilmember Setio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just join my colleagues in saying how excited I am about this process that's been laid out before us. And I think the revisions to the jointure certainly provide the kind of protection and the opportunities for input that this council wants to make and should be making, because like others, I feel that it can be an exciting role for economic development before, during the Games, and after the Games. And so the structure that we lay out is going to be infinitely important and a chance to weigh in at all parts. Having said that, give us an idea now, you said the negotiations are going to begin, and it could last for the next six or seven or eight weeks, I guess, on the agreement. When are you going to be coming back to the council? What's the first kind of go, no-go, first report back, the first time that we'll have a chance to kind of survey where we are and assess how we're going to move forward?
I think the answer to that, and I ask my colleagues that they differ, depends to some extent on how fast we're able to get in negotiations with the lawyer for LA 2024, because the first agreement is just between the city and LA 2024, and resolve those issues. I assume we'll work with the ad hoc committee first, but that's up to the council as to how that's structured. And I think as soon as we have the first session, we'll report, and we'll report constantly.
I think the intent is to work with the ad hoc committee, so just for clarification, which is why it was set up as well.
Well, again, that's beyond our scope, Mr. Englander, but I assume that was the case.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ru.
Thank you. I support the Olympics, but we have to get it right. That's why I fought for the changes, to protect taxpayers of Los Angeles and give our residents a meaningful role in the planning of the Games. Thanks to the efforts of our council president, the mayor, and the city attorney, the council now has a place at the negotiation table to better protect the city treasury and host another successful Olympics. I plan to remain diligent that the fiscal accountability and community engagement are fully protected in the negotiations with the bid committee and ultimately the host committee agreement. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the city council to include ironclad language that the future agreements that protect taxpayer money and more fully engage the residents of our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Cacorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, Los Angeles is the greatest Olympic city in the history of the Olympic Games. In 1932, the world was in the depths of the Great Depression, and this city stepped forward and hosted a profitable Olympics game. In 1984, the Olympic movement was floundering on the shoals of the 1980 Olympic boycott, and Los Angeles saved the Olympics Games and brought it back to what it is now. And by the way, turned a profit that young people in this city still benefit from today. We've had generations, literally generations, of youth in Los Angeles that have benefited from the success of the 1984 Olympics Games, probably the last and most successful Olympic Games in our lifetime. So we have this great opportunity that's before us right now, an incredible opportunity to once again host an Olympic Games that will be a pride for the city and a pride for the Olympic movement. I want to say first, though, that this process that we've already begun to engage in, I think, has set a great tone for what our continuing efforts with regard to the Olympics game will have to be. And I want to, again, credit, first of all, our council president for having brought us to this point, creating the ad hoc committee, and then calling upon the three people who are sitting at this table, who have done a masterful job, a masterful job of positioning this city in a way where we can be competitive, and we should be competitive, because this is a great Olympic city. And let Paris and Rome and whoever else wants to compete know, we're in this to win it. We are in this to win it, and I think we will. At the same time, we can't do that at the risk of exposure to our taxpayers, particularly here in Los Angeles, when so many other surrounding cities will benefit, when our state will benefit and others. I think other people need to step up and support this effort as well. But we could not have been at this point without our council president creating this ad hoc committee and without Mr. Santana, Ms. Soto, and Mr. Clark, and the work that you've done in bringing us here. So what we have before us right now is an opportunity to make history for generations still to come, and we also have before us protections that will ensure that this council will continue to be engaged in the public process, in the process of engaging our constituents and ensuring that we don't do this on the backs of our taxpayers. And so I strongly urge all of us to cast a And so I strongly urge all of us to cast an "aye" vote, and then let's move forward on the next steps that have been outlined so that we can win this Olympics Games.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Sadio.
Mr. Kocorian, I'm tempted just to say diddle. Let me just say real simply, these Olympics belong here in Los Angeles. And we have an opportunity for the third time within 100 years to bring the Olympic movement here. We've never been more prepared. We have an infrastructure in place. This city has grown significantly, leaps and bounds since 1984. And all that's needed is our leadership. All that's needed is our commitment. All that's needed is our vision, our fiscal responsibility, but at the end of the day, our action. And we need to move this, and we need to move this forward, and we need to embrace this and to understand that this provides tremendous opportunities for us. As Chair of Housing, I cannot tell you how excited I am at the thought that we can build 5,000 to 10,000 units of housing that will be left for us in 2025. I look forward to our innovations, mobility. I look forward to the opportunities for the entire community to come forward, the artistic community in this city, and I look forward for the opportunities for those who are concerned about the river and its role and place in the city, that we now have an opportunity to really move that project forward. This is such a moment for us, a historic moment, and we have to go for the gold. To use all these analogies, this is our moment to step up. And so I call on all of us to do just that. Those matters that were implicit in any agreement are now explicit. There's no reason for us to pause. We know explicitly with words and writing what our duties and obligations are, and now it's time for us to go forward. They were there implicitly, of course, but now, for all our concerns, they're fully addressed. No need to pause. Now's the time for us to go. Thank you.
All right. So now's come that time. This, colleagues, well, we've got, do you want to close again? Go ahead and close. I'm going to call for the vote, but you go ahead and close.
Okay. First of all, I want to say this was a very good conversation, members. I want to give credit to the mayor's office for believing that this could be done. And we all share his enthusiasm, and we all believe that if this is done correctly, we can be successful and that we can make a profit. I ask for, I think it's important for us to show that there is a united front in supporting this, where we have input from our people, from the people. We have input from the mayor's office, input from this council, input from the business community. I believe that we can get this done, just like the mayor believes it. So this vote makes us partners with the mayor moving forward because we all want the same thing, to win, because we're all unbelievably competitive, and we want to make sure that we provide one of the most special Olympic Games in the history of the Olympics. I ask for an "aye" vote primarily, though, for one reason and one reason at all, because I believe in you. I believe in us, and I know we can do this. There has yet to be a challenge that we have not faced and defeated. We will make this Olympics, if selected, successful financially and just a good time that will be remembered. So with that said, let us send a message today to the world that we, as a council, join this competition with a unanimous vote. So that would be my request. Thank you, members. Mr. President, back to you.
All right. This is one of, we have a few options in our lifetime, to vote on one of the most historic moments, an international vote to begin this dialogue, to bring the Olympics here to Los Angeles. And so with that, Mr. Wesson, this is what I'm going to do. Before we actually vote on this, and I'm going to ask the clerk to specify exactly what we're voting on for the record, we're going to do a standing roll call vote on this first. We're going to ask each member to stand and share their vote as the clerk goes through the roll, and reassure that then with an open roll vote for the board. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, must be for council is the ad hoc committee on the 2024 Summer Olympics report as amended by motions 20A and 20B.
All right. If you please, walk us through a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, going for the gold, votes aye.
Councilmember Bonin.
Aye.
Councilmember Buscagno.
Bring the Games to Los Angeles in 2024. Aye.
Councilmember Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Councilmember Englander.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris-Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wezar.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Corretts.
A very enthusiastic aye.
Councilmember Kocorian.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
It's a 15-way tie for an Olympic gold medal. I vote aye.
Councilmember Price.
C.
Councilmember Ru.
Aye.
And Council President Wesson.
That passes unanimously. We're going to go ahead and now open the roll for the official board vote. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to send that forth with, urgent forth with, without objection. And so we'll just open the roll for an urgent forthwith, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Great. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Hey, guys. Thanks.
Also, I'd like to welcome the mayor to the council chambers. Mayor Eric Garcetti is in the House on that historic vote. Mayor Garcetti, thank you very much. Please do not yell out from the audience and do not boo, or you're going to be asked to leave for disrupting the meeting. Thank you very much. With that, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and continue. One C is requested for 30 days. 30 days on one C should take us to October 2nd. Council's in recess, so it'll be October 6th. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Great. That'll be the order, without objection. All right. Now I believe we're on general public comment.
So I turned in a leaflet for everybody. Zep LaRouche, urgent appeal for action to the heads of government. The UN General Assembly is the world's last chance. The topic here coincides, a New York event of gathering of nation-states of the United Nations. This coincides with your event, neighborhood of the council, Congress, which pretty much is September 11, September 26. The UN is September 24, October 1st through October 1st. The idea of this leaflet is to emphasize what direction humanity should go. Either we collapse or we excel. And I think that anybody looking for any type of direction of what the future is, I think people should go to LaRouche PAC and read this topic. It's the only way out of this.
John Walsh.
John Walsh here to announce the formal opening of a referendum similar to the one from 1984. We're starting the signature process very soon to render any decision of an Olympics occurring here that you must, that the taxpayers must be protected. The referendum will say that not one dime of cost overruns for the Olympics will be paid for by any taxpayer in the city of Los Angeles. Now, I don't have the money, but I'm telling you, we're talking to some very, very wealthy conservatives who will put up the money, and I want Lusan, Switzerland, where the International Olympic Committee, to realize there is a shadow over Los Angeles because we're passing a referendum that you're not getting one dime of our money.
Sean. Yeah, Sean, come on up.
Yes, good morning. The Olympics is, I hope it happens, one more time, as Count Basie would say. I have an announcement. My choir is going to be at Our Lady of the Angels Monday night at 5:00. It might be invitation-only. You people are welcome, city council's welcome. If it aren't to get the Olympics here while we give it a home, find a homeless some good housing. They don't want, tourists don't want to come down here in the year 2024 and then have to look at the homeless situation. I hope we clean things up before then. I will be 60 years old.
How can you say we don't have the money for the video conferencing in the San Fernando Valley when you do? And when you owe that to the people of the San Fernando Valley for not seating for LA, and so you voted yes on your Olympics? So anyway, you screw up, that's why we don't have the money, because you rather overspend and then worry about the constituents and your city employees who work hard for their money. Example, spending $17,800,000 for pilgrim towers and $850,000 for Park Plaza, the multifamily housing for tax-exempt. You don't want to hear voices. You don't want to hear concerns. You can care less what's really important to most of your constituents in the, and the San Fernando Valley. That's why the people don't come to the valley or LA because they can't fight City Hall. You don't care about us. Bring back video conferencing.
Ruth Sarnoff. Henry.
Yes, government records show that we got a snafu, situation normal administratively filed up, and we got chaos. City and housing authorities operating stupidly as showing ongoing MOUs. MOU defined deductions account for every cent sheltered from the pay of Hackland Cooley employees in the past 25 years. And we know that not one cent of that money was provided to laces or cowpaws or to a state-approved 457B plan for the benefit of employees employed less than or more than six months. Consequently, you got to make back payments to laces, cowpaws, or stand trial for wage theft and money laundering. Now, which is going to be is still your option. Didn't nobody ever tell y'all, when you're doing business for we the people, that your conscience be your guide? And as Mr. Kennedy say, we don't have to see, be a genius to figure out what y'all screwed up. All you got to do is add and subtract, carry and rollover.
Thank you. Herman.
Oh, say, can you see but an early light?
I want to ask you to talk and not sing. It's disrupting the meeting. If this is public comment, not public singing. Okay. So now you're disrupting the meeting because I've asked you not to sing. Okay. Your time is up. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. You can cut his mic. Thank you. You're just still disrupting the meeting. Goodbye. Okay. We're going to ask you to leave council chambers if you continue this. All right. We're going to ask you to leave. Goodbye. Now you're still disrupting the meeting. If you continue this, we're going to ask you to stay out. Goodbye, Mr. Herman. Please escort him out. We're going to stop the meeting while he's escorted out. He's disrupting this meeting again. I believe this is almost every meeting now for the last couple of months that he's disrupted the meeting, so I want the record to reflect that. He's still yelling out from the council chambers. Still yelling out from the council chambers. And he's still yelling out at the council chambers? Why is he being escorted out? All right. We can return to general public comment. Wayne? Wayne.
Mr. B. wants to know, what did you do to Mr. Herman? Why, why do you throw out Mr. Herman? Why, Mr. B.?
Because Mitchell Englander's a Nazi.
That's right. And no on Mitchell Englander for the supervisor seat. Why?
Because he's a tax-and-spend liberal rhino cocksucker.
That's right. So also, vote no on the Olympics. Bring the Olympics to France. Unfortunately, me and Mr. B. have to dress like this, because we went to the police commission meeting today, and now the new rules require that you dress appropriately when you're addressing the police commission. So you have to dress like this, because it's ran by a bunch of murderous Nazi pricks. So again, no on Englander, no on the Olympics, the land of the...
Mr. Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, no longer here. Okay. That concludes general public comment. And I believe in it, we've got motions for posting referral?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Those are posted and referred. Thank you very much. Do we have any announcements from any colleagues? Seeing none. We have an adjourning motion from Mr. Weezer? And Mr. Ru? Will you please have, no, just raising your hand. Okay. If we could please rise for adjourning motions and ask all those in the public that are able to please rise for adjourning motions as well. Councilmember Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Martha Perez Valle. Martha was born in Isleta, Texas, on January 13th, 1950. She was raised in Juarez, Mexico, was married at age 17, and had her first child, Maria Lourdes Galencia, at age 19 in El Paso, Texas. Soon after the birth of her child, she joined her mother and the rest of her family, who moved to Los Angeles to the community of Ramona Gardens in Boyle Heights. She raised her children in the Ramona Gardens community and lived in her community for over 40 years. Martha Valle was a pillar of the community and her family. Although she only had a sixth-grade education, she was steadfast in her belief that her children would get a good education and go to college. She worked at Murchinson Street Elementary School for over 20 years as a parent advocate in the family center. Children living in Ramona Gardens faced many challenges, and Martha's role was to find a way to not only support the children, but to find ways to lift up the parents by connecting them to resources, providing advice and guidance, and many times became a mentor and mother figure to young mothers from the community. She loved her job at Murchinson and living in the Ramona Gardens community, because she had a purpose there. She was a person that people turned to for help, even if she wasn't working at the school, they would come to look for her at her home down the street from the school. She was also the neighborhood savings and loans. She started a culina 20 years ago that is still active today. This allowed community residents to save money by paying $25 a week, and then they would have money for Christmas presents, birthday parties, to trips to Mexico, and trips to Mexico. She didn't make any money from this project, but she did it out of love to help people have access to capital. From the pool of funds, sometimes she provided loans to families that suffered tragedies like a death of a loved one, or facing eviction, or wanting their children to go to college. She had faith in her community that the money would be paid back, and it always was. As a mother, daughter, sister, and wife, she was the center of her family. She was wise, logical, humorous, a problem solver, and loyal. She was a woman ahead of her time. Despite coming from a very traditional culture and living in a very traditional community, she was an amazing women's rights advocate in her community. When her daughter Lou dropped out of law school because she wanted to, she wanted to help teen girls in Ramona Gardens, she was disappointed, but then helped her build one of the biggest girls' sports programs on the east side. When Lou quit her job as a professor to start Legacy LA, she was a person that gathered the moms from the community that would be the founders of Legacy LA and helped make sure that her daughter had all the support she needed to create the dream organization in Ramona Gardens. Whatever her daughter Lou had accomplished in Ramona Gardens and the impact that is being made can be contributed to the unwavering support of Lou's mom, Martha Perez Valle. Martha survived by her husband Juan, daughters Lou and Karina, sons Juan Jr., Angel, and Daniel. Her husband and sons are members of the International Union of Painters Allied Trades, AFLCAOLOCO 831. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, looking to my right, seeing no other adjourning motions. On my left, yes, Councilmember Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of a longtime bard of Venice Beach, a symbol and a personification of a time and a place in Venice in the 1970s and the early 1980s of spirit and artistic expression and humor. Swami X., who was a longtime feature at Venice Beach and for several decades, the housemate of my predecessor, Bill Rosendahl, passed away over the weekend at age 89. He was born Harry William Hart, but he was really most well-known for being a fixture as a street performer, as an entertainer, as a political thinker, and as a provocateur at Venice Beach, at UCLA, in New York, in Washington Square, and at UC Berkeley. At UCLA, that's where he met a young student back in the 1970s named Antonio Villarosa, who he stayed close with for generations. Antonio stood here in 2007 or 2008, I think, and gave him a proclamation on behalf of the city. And it's at Venice Beach where he met Bill Rosendahl, who actually took him into his home from the late 80s until just a few days ago. And Bill cared for him, even in the throes of his own illness. At Venice Beach, Swami, as he was known, was known for wearing sandals, dirty bell-bottom blue jeans, an Indian shirt, and a tie-dyed bandana durag with long graying hair and this distinctive bushy beard. He really celebrated everything that was about Venice Beach, and he did poetry, he had sarcastic humor, he did really very sexual body and bathroom humor. But he also, and was frequently known for sort of blasphemy and taking on sacred cows. He really represented an attitude. He was a little bit Lenny Bruce, he was a little bit spiritual guru, but he was a real lover of the human spirit. He was a guy who raged at war and injustice, but he really loved people and the human spirit and just sucked every moment out of the marrow of life and really enjoyed his experience. He was something else. He performed at Venice Beach from 1970 until 85. He retired then. Soon after that, he moved in with Bill. He was also a regular contributor until a few years ago to the Free Venice Beachhead newspaper. He was skilled at numerology. I remember when I first met him at Bill's house in probably 2003 or '04, I walked in, and the first thing he wanted to know was, what was my birthdate, what time of day I was born? And then he sort of did the numerology. He scanned me, and he told Bill I was okay, and gave me the seal of approval. And that was an important moment. He fell ill in 2012 and had really been pretty much bedridden ever since, and Bill took incredible care of him. Before he got sick, they used to play, I think it was checkers, every night. And Swami usually won, so Bill used to call him champ. He had an amazing 88th birthday party in 2014, where, while he wasn't very communicative, everything he loved was surrounding him. An incredible guy, a legend, a spirit, a real symbol of a time and place that doesn't exist anymore. And on behalf of Bill and every member of the Rosendahl family, I want us to adjourn in his memory today. May he rest in peace.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other adjourning motions, colleagues, this meeting is adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.